Hello, good evening, everyone. We are about to start our official May Social Innovation Commission meeting. So I want to welcome every one of you who are joining the meeting. And of course, our wonderful commissioners and guests of the commission. Thank you for joining us. In compliance with the Governor's Executive Orders 2020-7, 2020-10, and 2020-18, attendance at this meeting will be by remote meetings only. Instructions for how to attend this meeting and participate in public comment are provided on the Cook County Legisstar webpage at cookcounty-- sorry, The proceedings will be able to be viewed via Facebook Live On May 20th at 4:00 p.m., written comments on any of the items listed on the agenda were accepted at the 7thdistrict.office@gmail.com email until 24 hours prior to the meeting. Written comments provided up to those 24 hours will be read out loud or summarized at the meeting to ensure that we do not go over the three minutes per comment that is allowed. Copies of the agenda and items to be considered at this meeting are made available electronically on the Cook County website at cook-county-legisstar.com. Please note that the Cook County building located at 118 North Clark Street, Chicago Illinois 60602, has reopened with restrictions to the public until a date to be determined due to the current circumstances concerning COVID-19. With that said, I'm going to ask Yesenia Lopez from my office who's helping us today to call the roll for attendance.
Give me a second, Commissioner. Commissioner Anoah Haddad. Commissioner Anoah Haddad. Absent. Commissioner Kerry Thomas. Commissioner Kerry Thomas. Absent. Commissioner Kristen Freeman.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Gary Aglupi.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Harold Rice.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Harry Alston. Commissioner Harry Alston. Absent. Commissioner Howard Mills.
Good afternoon, everybody. Present.
Present. Commissioner Jennifer Siskellin.
Good afternoon, everyone. Present.
Present. Commissioner John Yonin.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Karen Orington Reeves. Commissioner Karen Orington Reeves. Absent. Commissioner Chrissy De Laurentis.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Mark Lane. Commissioner Mark Lane. Absent. Commissioner Alderwoman Maria Haddan.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Mayor Alsberry.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Morgan Malone. Commissioner Morgan Malone. Absent. Commissioner Patrick Brutus. Commissioner Patrick Brutus. Absent. Commissioner Roger Cooley.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Sol Anderson. Commissioner Sol Anderson, believe her present.
Yeah, present.
Present. Thank you. Commissioner Wendy Raymer. Commissioner Wendy Raymer. Absent. Commissioner Sotchi Lestinoza.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Sotchi Flores. Commissioner Sotchi Flores. Absent. Commissioner Anaya.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Anaya, you have four.
Thank you, Yesenia. Now we'll go to public comment. Do we have any public testimony?
Did not receive any public comment or testimony. Also, just want to let you know that Commissioner Sotchi Flores has joined us.
Thank you. Please reflect that in the record. We will start off, given there's a quorum, we'll start off with the approval of the minutes from our last meeting that took place March 25, 2021. I'll entertain a motion. Do I have a mover to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Alderwoman Haddan, seconded by Commissioner Flores. Is there any discussion, any edits that we need to make to these minutes? Okay, so we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it? Wonderful. Okay, so I'd like to amend the-- hopefully I can get a mover to amend the agenda on the floor to ask a lead to add a new item. We failed to put commissioner-- I'm sorry, commission updates on my end. So if I may, please get that moved and seconded so that I can give some updates.
Howard Mills, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills, and seconded by Commissioner Yonin. Wonderful. So thank you all again for joining us today. Just wanted to give some quick updates at the county level and things that are quite important to the commission. Want to make sure that you all, as commissioners, are updated on this end. So the first update is in regards to American Rescue Plan. So Cook County is set to receive nearly $1 billion through the American Rescue Plan Act, which will be critical in maintaining public health initiatives and programs around economic development and many other things. So the county is currently developing a spending plan for this-- for these funds, based on the county's needs, again, in regards to businesses, residents, and the federal requirements that we're going to-- that are going to set forth for these funds. So we're working those details out. And of course, and as always, the county sets to ensure that the spending is in regards to our priorities that go around equity and inclusion. So any additional information, I'll make sure that we bring to the board or to the commission as we get more information on that end. The second update is in regards to-- similarly to the first announcement. Cook County has set forth an equity fund task force. So as you all may recall, during the budget process the last year, we were able to set some equity fund initiatives, again, around the same issues of healthcare, public safety, and economic development. So this equity fund task force will be serving in an advisory capacity to provide input to the administration on what the fund strategic investment should be in regards to the different communities and the diverse makeup of Cook County. So we will continue to look in seeking to reimagine safety and realign the systems that impact the residents. So again, if anything else comes up on that end, I'll make sure to update you all. If there are recommendations, feel free to reach out to my office. We are-- we got briefed this week. I, myself and some other colleagues, got briefed. And one of the areas that they made sure that they highlighted was the need and the interest in ensuring that commissioners are able to provide suggestions on how, you know, going forward, how we could set an infrastructure for the equity fund. So they've also talked about creating community meetings. So I know that this commission probably has interest in that aspect. So we'll definitely continue conversations on that end. The next quick update is-- I know at the last meeting, we mentioned our two new appointments. We now have the opportunity, obviously, of welcoming officially the superintendent of the Department of Transportation and Highways, Jennifer Siskellin. So again, welcome. And now officially, today is the first meeting that Mayor Bernard Alsberry from the Village of Hellcrest is able to join us. So we want to give him a very warm welcome and thank him for joining us and for, you know, being able to bring a very good site, specifically on the South suburban area. So if you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to maybe just give you the floor for a few minutes just so you can officially introduce yourself since this is your first official meeting.
Yes, you know, never give a politician the mic. I want to thank you all that allow me to be a part of this innovation, social innovation. I think I'll be able to get some insight on South suburbs, which is a very unique part of the county, which is very diverse. And I think that you guys-- you get a chance to hear some of the things that we're doing out here in the Southland. And looking forward to you guys' support and also whatever I can give from my perspective of being a longtime Chicagoan. I grew up in All-Gilgt, 130th House in Chicago. And I spent ninety-five years in the military. And so-- and I've been in South suburbs now for almost 25 years. So my perspective is pretty wide. And I'm excited about these conversations when it talks about equity and social innovation. So thank you for having me.
Thank you so very much for joining. So again, we want to give both of them a very warm welcome once again. The next announcement-- and I apologize, I always feel like I have many announcements, but I want to make sure-- that the commission is as updated as possible. The other relevant news is that during our last board meeting, there were a few items that I think would be of interest to the commission. So number one, worker protections for individuals, obviously, during COVID-19. So the county-- I, along with Madam President Toni Preckman and some other of my colleagues, introduced a proposed ordinance around COVID-19 vaccination rights for employees and employer obligations. Very similar to the one that was passed at the city level. We wanted to make sure that individuals would not ban employees from-- or punish them for getting-- or to trying to take time off to get vaccinated. We know that during these really critical times, some of our workforce, especially our frontline and essential workers, have suffered a lot and have been impacted. So we want to ensure that there's additional protections for them. So it passed the county's Department on Human Rights and Ethics, and the Commission on Human Rights will enforce the ordinance. And there will be violations that are subject to fines if there are any offenses in regards to employers that are in violation. So that's going to be discussed in the next month. It was introduced at the last meeting, but I wanted to make sure that I brought that up. In addition, we were-- myself and Commissioner suffered and were able to introduce Resolution 213149, which is requesting a hearing into the policies and practices of the county to protect the civil rights of immigrants and people of color who visit the Cook County location. So this was actually brought upon a discussion that one of our subcommittees actually started. So I want to make sure that I thank our co-chairs, Aglupi and Roger Cooley, for bringing up a really important issue. I think as a government entity and the fact that we have over 70-plus thousand acres of forest preserve, we have a Chicago Botanic Garden, a zoo. We have many public buildings. We want to ensure that Cook County is doing everything in their power to ensure safety of all the residents that come before us. So we are coordinating that hearing. I am going to be coordinating with the co-chairs so that they can be present and provide their testimony and hopefully come to a conclusion of a policy change in regards to that protection for communities, again, of color and immigrant communities. The last update that I have on my end is in regards to vaccination for particularly suburban Cook County. So in addition to the CCH clinics, the county is distributing vaccines at six mega sites. So there's also partnerships and numerous of mobile events. So as of May 19, I believe it was 49.6% of suburban Cook County that excludes Chicago-- Evanston, Oak Park, Skokie, and Stigney Township have received at least one vaccine dose and about 38.6% have completed their vaccination series. So we're going to continue to work on that front. And obviously, Cook County has also began offering Pfizer vaccines to individuals ages 12 and up, following the CDC's approval of the expanded emergency use authorization. So those are just some of the updates. They are working on creating partnerships with other organizations and entities in suburban Cook County to expand vaccination. So if any of you all know any organizations or your organization is interested in partnering up with Cook County Department of Public Health in doing a vaccination event or a push of some sort, please feel free to contact our office so we can help coordinate and put you in contact with the people that you need to be in contact with. So without further ado, we're going to switch it over to our presentation. So today, we have with us Amanda E. Lewis, who is a professor and currently serves as the Director of the Institute of Research on Race and Public Policy at UIC. The institute recently launched a report titled "Chicago's Racial Wealth Gap", which examines Chicagoans' different experiences in the middle class. And I think this is very timely, given our last presentation that we had from AARP. We were able to see the impacts in the long term with individuals and the disparities that are created. And we wanted to make sure to also highlight the findings that the UIC was able to find and have a discussion on that end because as we learn about that, we'll be able to provide recommendations here in Cook County. So I'm going to introduce our wonderful Professor Lewis. So again, she's the Director of the Institute for Research on Race and Public Policy. And alas, she's a distinguished professor of Black Studies and Sociology at UIC. Her research focuses on how race shapes educational opportunities and how our ideas about race get negotiated in everyday life. She is the author of several award-winning books, including with co-authoring, along with John Diamond, "Despite the Best Intentions: Why Racial Iniquities Persist in Good Schools and Race in the Schoolyard: Negotiating the Color Line in Classrooms and Communities." And as Director of the Policy Research Institute, she has co-authored a number of reports as part of the State of the Racial Justice in Chicago project, which also highlights the experiences, the conditions of racial/ethnic groups in the city. So please help me welcome Professor Lewis as she discusses the issues and the findings of the report.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay? Yes, okay. I'm on my phone and my computer because my computer wasn't connecting very well. So hopefully this goes well. And Yesenia is going to be doing the slides for me. So Yesenia, you can start those whenever you are ready. Thank you so much, Commissioner, for inviting us here today. We're really excited to be able to share this work with you. For those of you who don't know, IRPP, we've been around for almost 20 years now. And the project I'm going to be talking about today is part of-- as the Commissioner was saying-- a larger project where we have published-- you can go to the next one, Yesenia-- a series of reports about the conditions and experiences of different racial/ethnic groups in the city of Chicago. There you go. And I want to just spend two seconds on this. They're all available for free for download from our website. We also have hard copies, which we are happy to share anytime. Folks have been using these reports around the city in lots of different ways-- community groups, local organizations, schools, et cetera. And we started this work wanting to bring together all the existing information from lots of different kind of administrative data that exists all over the place. You probably know a lot of this kind of data. You probably see a lot of it. But we wanted to bring it together in a kind of consumable and accessible form to say, what do we know about how groups are really doing in Chicago? The first report focused on the three largest groups, which were Blacks, Latinx community, and white community. And then we did a subsequent report about Asian-Americans and about Native Americans. And all these reports, we didn't actually collect any new data. We just looked at existing indicators. But one of the reports from our first report-- that one of the data points from our first report that really stuck with us-- if you want to go to the next one, Yesenia-- is-- was data on wealth in particular. Actually, skip one ahead. I'll-- I'm going to try to focus more on the data here. So this was an indicator that came-- that we included-- that was from the Corporation for Enterprise Development Racial Wealth Divide Initiative. And at the time, there wasn't very much good granular data about wealth gaps in the city of Chicago. But we did have this. And it showed that twice as many Black and Latinx households as white households in the city were what we might call liquid asset poor or had zero or negative net worth in their household. And this one-third of Black and Latinx households, essentially what it means is they functionally have no safety net for when they hit any of the kind of regular road bumps of life, much less the consequences of a global pandemic, for instance. Another data point that stuck with us quite a bit was from the Opportunity Insight Project, which showed that Black and Latinx children born to middle-income families in Chicago were far less likely than white children from families with the same incomes to actually remain in the middle class or to attain a college degree. And these racial patterns endowed more mobility in Chicago were much higher than national averages. And raised really important questions for us about what was going on with these Black and Latinx middle-class families in particular. And while these kind of statistics are really powerful in lots of ways, they can't really tell us kind of exactly how families are experiencing or what's going on. So in this report, that's why we decided to collect some new data and interviewed-- at some point, we interviewed a total of 106 families. We're only going to be showing you data from 99 today for different reasons I'm happy to address later. But the idea with this report was to try to look at families who make similar income, who all have college degrees, who have professional managerial jobs, people who, in the kind of broad sense, fit within a category we think of as the middle class and get a good sense of what their experiences are. Are they financially secure? Are they financially precarious, et cetera? Now, I don't know how much you all know about the data on wealth in general, so I just want to show you a couple slides. You want to go to the next one, Yesenia? So this shows national patterns in racial wealth gaps. And there's a few things that I want you to take from this slide. One is that wealth gaps in the United States are huge-- racial wealth gaps. They're much larger than gaps in income rates. They're much larger than lots of other indicators of economic prosperity. And many would argue that, in fact, they are the most important indicator of economic well-being for families, in part because they are indicators of agency and how much one-- how much control one has over their life. We could talk both about the causes of these wealth gaps and their effects. In terms of their causes, there's study after study after study, which basically shows that these wealth gaps are a result of intergenerational transmissions of resources. What I mean by that is most of these resources are resources that are passed down through families. And because wealth begets wealth, the more wealth your family has, the more wealth you're likely to accrue. And I'm going to give you some data about that more in a second. But these wealth gaps are not about savings rates. They're not about income differences, as we'll show you in a second. They persist across income rates, across education levels. Actually, go to the next one, you send me, just so I can give another example. So this is if we look at folks without a bachelor's degree and with a bachelor's degree. And what you can see here is that even white families where they don't have a college degree, they have more wealth than Black and Latinx families with a college degree, right? So there's lots of ways that we could cut this up along race, education, income lines. But any way you cut it, the smallest ratio is that white households have 10 times the wealth of Black and Latinx households controlling for everything else. And on many other indicators, the number is actually more like 20 times as much. And it's actually gotten worse in the last 10 or 15 years. And we can happy to answer questions about that. So just briefly, want to tell you who we spoke to. Go to the next one, Yesenia. So we tried to very much find families to understand why families who seem similar on in terms of income, in terms of occupation, have such different experiences. And that's why we found families who generally, like I said, had to meet the criteria of having higher education, having college degrees, having professional managerial jobs, having a fairly high income. We can talk about the different cutoffs of that if anybody wants to nerd out with us at some point. And this is a long list of indicators, which basically gives you a sense of the sample overall. It's a relatively privileged sample. I'll show you some data in Cook County compared to other groups. But when you dig a little deeper into our sample, next slide, what you see is that while everybody in our sample was solidly middle-class in terms of income and education, they came from quite different backgrounds. So Black and Latinx respondents' families were twice as likely to be-- report that they were financially struggling growing up-- and far less likely to describe their family as well-off. They were also much more likely to be first-generation college students than our white respondents. Go to the next slide. And that background also translated into how they described their present. And what we see here is something that we'll talk about throughout this presentation, that we talk about in detail. I look like I might be a little frozen here. Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Seems like we can hear you now, but we did lose you for a second. Oh, you froze up again.
So what we see here that--
So we'll-- we'll give it a second. Let's see if Professor Lewis can fix her audio or maybe have her log off and log back in to see if we can hear her better. There we go. And remember, for all of you that are joining, Commissioners-- Yesenia, if you can, please add Commissioners Brutus and Malone also to the roll. They were able to join us.
I will add them to the record.
Thank you. And for any of you all that have maybe questions as she's going on with the presentation, feel free to send them via the chat so that Yesenia can help us facilitate questions after the presentation is done.
I'm switching to my computer now because it seems to be working better. Can you hear me okay? Yeah. Okay, Yesenia, can you go to the next one? Thank you. Sorry about that. You'd think by now we would have figured all this out. Okay. So actually, go to the next one. We're just going to skip this for a second. So what you see here in general is just to show you that the people we spoke to are, in general, a pretty socioeconomically privileged group vis-à-vis the entire county. They have high levels of education and income. Next slide. Okay, so the big thing that I want you to take away from this is that the wealth gaps locally are big. I'll show you that in a second. And that they're really mirror these national patterns about being about the ways that resources move across families intergenerationally. Although, we tend to think about intergenerational transmissions of resources as primarily being about inheritance, but we want to talk about all the key ways throughout the life. about inheritance, but we want to talk about all the key ways throughout the life course that people either get or give resources across family lives. Next slide. So one of the biggest things that we saw in our data... Do you want to go to the next one, Yesenia? Maybe you can't hear me again.
We can hear you.
Okay. Oh, but we lost the slides. Okay, I'll just keep, I'll just tell you what was in the slides, how's that? Okay, so one of the most important things that we found in the project is big differences in who received financial support from their parents for college education. So, and this probably doesn't surprise you, but almost more than 60% of our white respondents had full financial support from their parents for college. That means that they paid for the entirety of their college education, whereas, in contrast, 50% of black respondents and almost 70% of our Latinx respondents had no support for their college education. And when we asked people about this and talked to them about what their experience was, right, great, Yesenia, you go to the next one. These were the kinds of things that we heard. So this is Hannah, a white respondent, who talked about, I think he gave me a leg up. I appreciate my upbringing a lot, just because of the fact that my college was paid for by my parents. I think it's really helped me. Next one. This is Regan, who said, "My grandparents paid the tuition." I'll just read you what you said. "My grandparents paid the tuition, my parents gave me money for rent, food, I did not have to work at all in college. They must have sent me like, I must have had some like an allowance or something. I can't really remember, but I'm guessing that's how it was. I had everything I needed." Or in this case, Sharon, who reported that parents paying for her college gave her a leg up. She said, "I appreciate my upbringing a lot, just because of the fact my parents, my college was paid for by my parents. I think it really helped me." I mean, when you start out ahead, then you get a lot farther, a lot faster. Go to the next one. And in contrast, and I'll talk more about this in a second, what we've heard over and over again from many of our black and Latinx respondents was, his parents couldn't help him with college, my mom couldn't help me with college, they couldn't help us with the wedding, they didn't help us with anything. And again, this was not about families who didn't want to help their children or didn't. In fact, many of them talked about their parents helping as much as they possibly could, but about whether or not they were coming from families where there was a reserve of resources, wealth, that could be drawn upon to pay for college education. Next slide. So these respondents talked not just about, and this is the kind of compounding effect of this, not just that their college education was paid for, but that especially at this important life stage of early adulthood, some of them were graduating... And I'll talk more in a minute about those who were graduating with a lot of debt, but then also having lots of other help along the way. And I want to talk about one other very meaningful kind, and this is about help with down payments on houses. Go to the next slide. So a lot of our respondents talked about that when they graduated from college and began their adult life and really wanted to launch themselves out into the world, that almost 60% of white respondents had down payment support from their parents, where this was true of only about a quarter of black respondents and about 17% of Latinx respondents. And in one, in part, what this yielded was, as you can see, very different rates of homeownership among this group. And we can talk more about that. Next slide. So in contrast to those who had regular infusions of money coming in, and we heard lots of stories, it wasn't just about money for down payment, it was help buying a car, it was help paying for childcare, we'll get to that. In contrast to this, go, next one, please. I want to focus in on a little bit here on this group in particular, who did not have financial support from their parents to go to college. Next slide. And for this group, what we heard over and over again was about the long-term and really crippling effects of student debt for them as they began their adult lives. This is from Jasmine, who I think captured what a lot of them said, which is that paying student loan debt was like taking water out of a bathtub with a syringe. And we've seen this kind of data nationally, in which not only do black and Latinx students graduate with more college debt, but 20 years later, they have paid less of it off. So their experience even with paying off debt is much more difficult, I'll talk about that more in a second, but it has this kind of lasting consequence on all the other ways that they can use the resources that they've got going in. Next slide. Another example comes from Salvador, who described the debt this way. He said, "It's juggling, it's just juggling, it's just damage control, because obviously I'm not building wealth, I'm just trying to juggle the debt." And this was for folks who were, as you can imagine, managing all the costs of covering their household, raising kids, along with trying to make a dent at all in the kind of long-term student debt that they were managing. And it wasn't just debt from undergrad, in fact, some of them had managed to get through their undergraduate education without debt, but because they'd gone on to get a graduate degree, then had to take on $50,000 in debt, say, to help pay for a master's degree or something like that. Next slide. And in contrast, you remember, we talked to Sharon earlier, who said she graduated without any debt and then got help from her parents in buying her home. And here she talks about one of the ways this accumulated. She said, "That made the loan that much smaller, which means the interest we're paying is that much less, we paid it off that much quicker." And she sort of speaks to this idea about how wealth begets wealth, and it just multiplies, multiplies, multiplies. And similarly, we heard from Jasmine, if you want to go to the next one, Yesenia, in what she was like, you know, for a long time, when she first graduated from college, she couldn't figure out why a lot of the peers that she'd gone to school with seemed to be doing so much better than she was. And then she finally realized, she said, "She says, 'It's very different if you're 25 and you graduate from college with no student loan debt, and then your parents give the down payment on your first house.'" That sets you up totally differently than a 25-year-old with student loan debt and not having any financial backing or safety net. And so your first job out of college, you're paying all the bills. The other thing that really compounded this, that we found in our interviews, and that is also true in national data, if you want to go to the next slide, Yesenia, is that we have, oh yeah, so this is, I'll tell you, this is actually very interesting data. Again, it shows when people often ask me, "Is it worth it to get a graduate degree?", the answer is almost inevitably yes, if your indicator is about socioeconomic outcomes. But as you can see, it does kind of compound the inequality in some ways. Go to the next one, Yesenia. So what I wanted to get to here was that one of the things that we find, and that is, as I said, echoing in other national data, is that not only do white households have much more money coming in all the time from their extended families, but they have much less money going out. So for the black and Latinx households we interviewed, even though they were not financially thriving, they were still often the most well-off members of their extended families and regularly were providing financial assistance to family members in lots of different ways. And they were happy to do this, they were proud to be able to do this, but it still meant it was a huge financial burden. And I'll just give you one example, just send you next slide. This is from Guadalupe, one of the people that we interviewed for the project. And as she describes, when we interviewed her, she's talking here about all the different ways that she helps her parents, she pays for the, copays for doctor's visits, she paid financial support for them to travel to Mexico. When one, a member of her family died, she had to help pay for funeral expenses. And she's juggling these kinds of outlays to support family members at the same time that she's trying to pay down her debt and trying to do all the kinds of activities that a lot of, you know, families want to be able to do for their kids. Send them to summer camp, send them to enrichment programs and other kinds of things. And all of these complicated trade-offs for families that were financially struggling were quite different, experienced quite different, felt quite different financially, but also psychologically, as they tried to figure out what it was. You know, many of them had striven, strove very hard, worked very hard their entire lives to achieve a kind of middle-class status. And as I'll talk about more in a minute, they recognized that they had sort of achieved it, but they weren't feeling very middle-class. Next slide. And one of the other ways that this manifests is in their ability to plan for their future. So as you know, as we talked about, all of these families understood really in a personal way how consequential student loan debt was, and how important it would, how much they wanted to be able to pay for their kids to go to college so they wouldn't have the same experience of crippling debt. And despite all this, many families were not able to, had not yet been able to start college savings accounts for their kids. Whereas we see 70% of white households had college savings for their kids, almost all of the Latinx households we talked to, and almost 60% of black households hadn't yet started college savings. And this was really something that they talked a lot about and were very stressed about. It also, the amount of savings is quite different, and in fact, a lot of the families who had college savings, talked about accounts that they had maybe not even started themselves, but a grandparent or an aunt or somebody had started at some point in that they'd been contributing to. Because one of the things that we have to remember, not only is that there are large racial gaps in wealth, but that because of the way nature of our social networks and because of racial patterns in intermarriage and that sort of thing, we tend to be embedded in networks of other folks who have, either have or don't have resources. So white families often talked about not just the resources that they were getting, but the in-laws were giving and the countervailing for the black and Latinx households. Next slide, please. Okay. So I just want to offer a few concluding thoughts, one, a kind of overall summary, and then some policy ideas, and then I'm looking forward to some conversation. So one of the things that we want to talk about that came up a lot in these is that we are both dealing with confronting not just the ongoing legacies of kind of racism of the past. And here, I mean, all of the, when we think about the kind of wealth accumulation opportunities that happened throughout the 20th century into this, into the most recent century, as hopefully many of you know, I'm happy to talk about it, but here I'm talking about redlining, I'm talking about the legacy of land contract sales, I'm talking about all the widespread discrimination that operated in housing and other domains. So whereas wealth accumulation opportunities really were unequally distributed across different groups. So we're still living with the legacies of all of that racism of the past, but we're also here seeing the ongoing discrimination in the present. And by that, I mean not only ongoing housing discrimination in housing and mortgage lending, and we've seen lots of studies recently about the appraisal of homes in other parts of the real estate market, we can go into all that, but also the full brunt of kind of policy shifts, which have functioned in many ways as a retreat from a commitment to the public good. And I want to talk about those more in a minute, but I think the biggest one we're sort of covering in some of that data was how much more it costs for people to pay to go to public, get higher education, to get a college degree now than it did in the past. These more recent kind of policy changes make life harder for all families, but because of the way that wealth has accumulated in some families more than others, the impact of them is disproportionately felt in black and Latinx families who don't have reserves of wealth to protect them during tough times or help them to secure a better future for their kids. Next slide, Yesenia. Okay, so policy, and I'm ranging wide broadly in terms of policy here. And I want to just give lots of different ideas. So one policy idea, and I know this is actually, for the first time in my adult life, something that's actually getting serious conversation now, would be a real conversation about reparations. And there's lots of different forms that this could take. I know some people get very upset as soon as we start talking about it, think we're talking about cash transfers, and there are some who make that argument, but I think there's lots of other ways to imagine and think about redress, both individually but also to communities. And we can, for instance, there was a study done recently looking at land sales contracts that showed almost 80% of homes that people purchased or thought they were purchasing in Inglewood, for instance, throughout the 50s and 60s, were through these land sales contracts where they were eventually, where all that wealth, all that investment in those homes was eventually transferred to folks who rescinded the contracts and essentially people were evicted from the homes that they thought they had purchased. So there's lots of ways of thinking about how resources have gotten extracted from communities, and what it would mean collectively to try to not just acknowledge that history, but also to think about investments that might begin to actually close these historic racial wealth gaps. Another thing that economists have talked about along these lines is baby bonds, which would be, of course, how large these would, they would be small accounts, our accounts opened up for every baby born in the United States, that would range in size quite dramatically depending on the wealth of your family. Some families might only get 500, some families would get an account up to 60,000. But it is sort of an investment in a way to close racial wealth gaps, starting from the earliest ages and give people, young people, accounts that they could draw upon when they want to go to college, buy a house, all the kinds of things that other families already have. Another set of policies, which are getting a lot of attention at the federal level right now, and seem incredibly important, are enforcement of anti-discrimination laws in housing. It is true that black and Latinx households are not receiving the same kind of payoff for owning a home as white households, we could talk about that, and yet, it still is the largest source of wealth for those families. So helping people to buy homes, helping people to buy homes with high-quality mortgages, helping them to receive the appropriate appraisals for their homes, all those kinds of things are important in this realm. Another factor would be renewed investment in public higher education. The costs of higher education in the state of Illinois have gone up dramatically. The amount of public support for public higher education, and I'm not saying this just because I work at UIC, but there's lots of data which shows how much less we're supporting public higher education, how much more it costs for students in our state. And this cost is having a really devastating impact on these families who are first-generation college students when they begin their adult lives and are trying to get a foothold and begin to build wealth. I'll mention two other quick things and then stop, I'm getting the "time's almost up" indicator. Another is robust family support policies. And these are all the things that we know that any of us, all of us need. And the difference is that what we found over and over again in our interviews is that families who came from wealth were able to privately fund a lot of these things. If they didn't, they could privately fund childcare, they could privately fund maternity leave if they didn't have it through their job, they could privately fund a leave to take care of an ill parent if they need to, all those kinds of things that family in general should have access to, that most families in industrialized countries around the world have access to. Other families weren't able to do, or if they got in a spot where they had to do it, they just had to take on more debt in order to be able to address their family's basic needs. Obviously, there's lots of being written right now about how we increase retirement security, people are, the whole structure of how we save for retirement has changed dramatically over the last 40 or 50 years. And finally, I think there's lots of evidence that overall raising the minimum wage to a living wage would in fact help all families, but even these middle-class families with college degrees. And I will stop there and turn my video back on in the hope that my connection remains stable, and look forward to any comments or questions. Thanks.
Wonderful, thank you, Professor Lewis. So I'm not sure if there's any questions at the moment, but I do want to, you know, draw the parallels to the last commission meeting that we had, again, where we had ARP talk about specifically the wealth gap and how, you know, that burden within the inequities caused, obviously, long-term inequities for some of our elderly population, especially people of color, again, when they turn 65 and older. I think one of the biggest statistics that really stuck with us the last time was that I believe it was like 80% of people, I don't even want to misquote, it was just a huge, ridiculous percentage of individuals over nearly 90 years old still had a mortgage. So I think that that really brings to light the fact that there are huge inequities and that there's, you know, steps that can be taken. So I think I'll start off maybe with a question that I had, I think that you highlighted, you know, towards the end of your presentation, some of the different initiatives in regards to closing that wealth gap that exists between different racial and ethnic groups. Do you foresee that any of these is more important than the other, or do you, Professor Lewis, believe that it is a collective push on all ends that will actually fully address the issues at hand?
Well, I mean, obviously, some of them are easier than others. And so I think if you... And so I think if you, there's some pretty good data from economists. I'm thinking here of Sandy Darity, who's recently had a book, From Here to Equality, which charted some of this, who argue that we aren't going to close racial wealth gaps. These racial wealth gaps that really in some ways are the kind of congealed effects of centuries of structural racism, unless we engage in some kind of program of reparations. That said, and I think there's actual, real conversation about that, but I think there are other ways to, that might be easier, other mechanisms that might be easier, policy lifts in the kind of near future. One of which I would say is the kind of funding of public higher education. We can look in my lifetime at, at the costs of public higher education across the country and in the state of Illinois and see how much it has changed. Even in the last twenty years, the state has now provides, I think, half the support to public universities as it once did. That means that public universities are more and more tuition-driven. We increasingly pass the costs on to students, to our citizens, to our residents of our state, and do so at higher cost to them. I mean, I think the other thing that's part of this that I didn't talk about much today, but I think is worth thinking about and falls directly in the realm of public policy, is also regulation of private enterprise. One of the things, there's a story in, I think he's now at the University of Missouri called Devin Fergus, who wrote this wonderful book that I highly recommend called Land of the Fee, F.E.E. And what he shows is how much consumer fees have increased dramatically over the last forty or fifty years, particularly really since the nineteen eighties. But you can see that we are, we give away now half as many Pell Grants as we used to. We are charging students more for student loans. People are making more money. Student loans has become a huge profit business in the same way that subprime loans became in the early two thousands. And so we're in, in a context in which we have low and working, low-income and working-class families often serving as a source of profit in a ways that are really troubling. And so I think that, you know, there's, there's a kind of two-handed thing there, which is like, how do we support higher education more, possibly forgive some of that student debt, right? Those proposals are on the table right now, would make a big deal for, have huge consequences for families. And then there are also kind of more universal policies, which is just stronger supports for families. I know a lot of that are, a lot of these things are getting talked about at the federal level for the first time in a, in a long time. And even though they seem universal and would benefit all families, like I said, the consequences of not supporting those things are really felt unevenly. And so I think the benefit would, would go a long way to sort of helping to draw. It's a very long answer.
Perfect. Thank you so much for highlighting that. Were there any other additional questions from any of the members? I don't see any hands, but feel free to unmute yourself if there's any questions. I don't see on my end any.
This is Commissioner Cooley.
Commissioner, please.
I'm wondering if there's any thoughts that you all, that you've had, Professor Lewis, about specific recommendations in the context of Cook County government?
Um, well, I think, I mean, one of the things that we see locally, and this is, you know, the, part of this is about Cook County, part of this is about the city of Chicago, right? So the kind of reverberations of how these things play out across things, is also that these families report being subject to. So one of the things that happens when federal and state support cuts back and localities like Cook County and City of Chicago are forced to raise more funds, is implementation of efforts to kind of close budgetary gaps. And so one of the ways that those functions is through fines and fees and other kinds of ticketing practices, which impact some families much more than others. So that would be one thing. I think when we think about wealth, and it's probably less true for these middle-class families, but when you think about that first slide and the families who have zero or negative net worth, I think the changes that we've seen recently around things like eliminating cash bail are hugely consequential, because what we had in Cook County jail were lots and lots of folks who were in, being held in jail for a long time just because they didn't have the money to make bail, who hadn't yet been convicted of anything. And I think some of the policies that we see around policing practices in general, some of those things, have really different consequences across families. Because the other thing that's kind of complicated here is thinking about dynamics around things like housing segregation. And I think there are ways and that even middle-class, particularly black families tend to live in, in fairly, you know, well, everybody segregated, in Cook County in general and in the city of Chicago. And the consequences of that for housing values and things are pretty dramatic. And I think we all have to think creatively about what it would mean to intervene around things, around some of the discriminatory practices going on in housing right now. And I think there, I wouldn't want to wait for federal solutions to some of these things, particularly around things like, I think the, the data that came out of the University of Chicago recently around, for instance, like I said, housing appraisals were, were pretty dramatic and have, have large consequences.
Thank you. I think that there's two members that have their hand up, so I'll hand it over to Commissioner Brutus.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. Professor, thank you very much for that information. It was, it was just beyond remarkable. Very eye-opening, very hard to have a reaction to the information once you actually hear it and see it laid out. But the information is actually, forgive me for saying this, it's like, it's one-dimensional, right? It shows you a black and white narrative of the actual conditions that, you know, we are all experiencing. And so my question is, why do you believe? So I'm asking you for your opinion based on your research and your presentation. Why do you believe, or do, or what do you believe, or, or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me, let me re, let me recalculate here. I want to ask your opinion. Why has it taken government so long to, to make the necessary corrections in policy that would start the reversal of these real financial and economic trends that have persisted over decades, right? We use the word systemic. And so why has government not reacted in real time sufficiently enough that these issues can, you know, could no longer be the case, right? I mean, like the mayor yesterday had to call out the media for their systemic, you know, practices of not, you know, hiring, you know, the right necessary journalists to, you know, present the stories in a way that appeals to all the demographics on the rainbow. So like, what is your opinion on why government is taking so long to, to, you know, make these corrections that are necessary for us to have a better society?
Thank you for that question. And if, if my, if I start freezing, I'm going to turn my camera off. So I'm going to be totally frank with you, because we don't have enough time together for me to be careful on how I answer this. So I'm going to tell you that government not only hasn't been the solution, but for much of our history, government was the problem. So if you look at or go read The Color of Wealth, you know, I can, I can offer you twenty volumes that would help you understand that the construction of racial wealth gaps in this country was largely through government policy, like, you know, just redlining, which hopefully you already know a lot about. But if we think about the ways during the New Deal that the government set up this system that literally colored around the, the boundaries of every neighborhood in cities across the United States and colored those neighborhoods that were African-American red and therefore rendered them ineligible for mortgages and insurance and all those kinds of things, programs that, policies that persisted for decades and that persisted informally much longer beyond that. And we can talk about housing covenants and we can talk about zoning policies. Many of the intractable challenges that we have around wealth inequalities were actually driven by government policy, which is part of the reason why I think it's only fair to say that really, we're, we're not responsible for trying to fix this, right? It's, it's not, it's partly through private industry, it's partly through the kind of practices of white neighborhood associations. There's lots of other kind of factors involved in the kind of history of racism in the United States. But, but I think government hasn't, hasn't been a friend. And when we think about a lot of the changes that happened in the nineteen eighties and nineties that really were dilettrious, that really was, you know, Reaganism and it's, you know, it was about, you know, it was based on the philosophy that smaller governments, less regulation would help. And what we've seen from that over and over again is that policies and practices got instituted at that time that preyed on low-income communities. So even during the housing crisis, you know, what we found were that almost eighty percent of black and Latinx households were getting the subprime loans, even though they would have qualified for conventional loans. But part of what's happening is that all the incentives set up by the banks were that if you were a mortgage lender, mortgage broker, you made a lot more money through the fees for these subprime loans, right? So, so it is partly about private practices, but it's also about, in some ways, government advocating, having stepped back from a role that it had at a different point in time of legislating and offering protections in some ways for some of this. So not, not, sorry. And hopefully that answered your question, but I'd love to talk more about it sometime.
Thank you. The next commissioner that has a question is Commissioner Howard Mills.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Can you all hear me? I hoping.
We can, yes.
Thank you so much. And Professor, thank you so much for this presentation. It is extremely important data and more importantly, it's important reality. One of the items I wanted to talk about in front of the commissioners that has a bit of a question in it for you, Professor, is that over the past several years, working with President Preckwinkle on the issue of digital equity, the work that I did in looking at digital proficiency, digital connectivity and digital devices, where we had large swaths of our neighborhoods in Southland coming up short when it came to what I would call digital well-being. And because of this disadvantage in not just young people, but even in the whole lifespan, one of the opportunities that even the University of Illinois has been involved in, that Tim Colleen and in, in, in the DPI, the Discovery Partners Institute, and their initiatives to upskill large numbers of people into a more digital lifestyle. That said, it has been, I think, the thinking changing that four years of college may not be the answer. And I know it seems to have been a problem. I believe it. I've, I've been, I've paid for four years of college, twice, for two kids. And I know what it does, but I can also tell you that in some cases, the upskilling of individuals, and we have Karen Norton Reeves Group involved with the DPI and others, the partnership is looking at how can we get people to be wage earners beyond minimum wage with productive lives that do not require college degrees. Much of your data looked at, I believe, four-year degrees. And even if it were the case that you're impoverished and you get into Harvard, those few people will obviously pay nothing. But you're absolutely right that four years is a lot of money and maybe not necessarily required in, in the future. So have you studied the two-year effect or the upskilling of digital competency in populations yet? Because your data kind of stops at two thousand nineteen. That's my question.
Yeah, we haven't studied it. I think it's a really important issue. I mean, I think, I think the, the tension is, right, is that we've sold everybody on this idea of college for all. The idea that, that everybody needs a college degree, that that's a good thing, that. And the challenge is that we've selling people on this at the same time that we've been slowly cutting back. Like, more and more people are going to college now, they're not all graduating, but more and more people are going to college now than were thirty, forty years ago. And they're certainly paying a lot more to go. And I think you're right, college degree is, is both not enough and then not always necessary, right? The challenge again, though, is that we don't have the kind of, you know, if you look at countries like Germany or lots of other places, there are these clear pathways where you can apprentice into other kinds of jobs, where it's clear that if you don't want to college, if you don't want to go to college, but you want to get, you know, a job in the trades, or there's, there's pathways to that, that we haven't, haven't invested in, you know, probably since the late nineteen seventies in, in some significant ways. I think there's, there's lots of sense that the digital era offers new possibilities and I hope that's right. I do think there's evidence recently in some more qualitative work that even the kind of like, so even when young people get access to digital, which are computers, to technology in schools, that it mirrors a lot of other kind of insidious patterns of inequality, which is that, that privileged, high-income, the best school districts, when, when kids get access to technology, they're, they're getting access to it as a tool, right? It's being, they're using it, they're learning how to code and do all those things. And then a lot of other communities, even when they get access to technology, it's most often as a kind of rote instructional tool, you know. So how, the question is, even when we think about digital issues, we, we, there's lots of, of questions about, about equity that we have to do. But I, in, in terms of your, the kind of overarching part of the question, and particularly around the two-year thing, I don't have any data to draw on from that. Thank you, though.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll hand it over to Commissioner Mayor Ellsbury.
Yes. A great presentation.
Thanks, Mayor.
It's great information, really, I think it's information that we probably heard, I mean, I've heard a lot. So even though maybe new to some, I think it's something that we in the Southland have been talking about for so very long. I think some of the issues that you tap upon is that the biggest piece is institutional races, racism that's embedded in the system itself. So when people ask questions, so why do you think we haven't done better? Why, because the system is, you know, as some people say, the system's been rigged for so long. And people don't want to talk about that component of it. When we talk about going to college compared to going to trade school, you know, you couldn't get into trade, they had, they had the trade school right there on the, in Chicago, at Dawson. Then they decided to change it, they moved it far west, which made it impossible for some people who went through the program to actually go to the program now. My question, I know I texted a question to you also through the chat, is that, and this, and I just want to answer, have you looked at these studies that show that when people move away from Chicago, if they graduate from Chicago, college, and they move from Chicago or move out of Cook County, I think some studies show that they do much better. Have you looked at that research at all?
Well, a little bit. So what we did recently is we looked at, it was, it turned into the report, we thought it would just be a two-page policy brief. We had been, kept reading and hearing about how everybody was leaving, black folks were leaving Chicago, they were going away, and we were just, at some point, we're wondering, is this true? Is, is it new? Is it? So the last report we published actually was on this question of is there a black exodus? And if there is, what's driving it? And to be totally frank with you, what we found is, is people started leaving in nineteen eighty. There actually have, have not left as much recently, but there was a lot of migration out of Chicago from nineteen eighty till about two thousand. And then it really was exactly sort of as you're implying about economic opportunity. When Chicago was a place of economic opportunity for black folks, they came here. When it stopped being a place of economic opportunity for black folks, they started leaving, right? It's, it, you know, it's not a completely causal argument, but if you look at all the patterns, there's some pretty clear sense of what was going on. But they're not going very far. So when we look at the top ten destinations of folks who leave Cook County, it's in the metro area. They're going to Wisconsin, they're going Indiana, they're going to the outer suburbs. So folks are tied to the area, and I think a lot of folks want to stay here, but they really are. But they really are, there are lots of factors that make it more or less affordable, where there's job opportunities and other things. So I think the narrative that we have that people are like, go all moving to Atlanta or all moving to Charleston is just not true for the most part. Some folks are, and there's, you know, it's like 5%, say, to 5% to Atlanta, 5% Charleston. But um, but folks really aren't. There, the population has declined. But not so much in the last 10 or 15 years. I think we just didn't talk about it for a long time. And when folks left, they they stayed close. But they're, you know, so I think it's kind of a mixed bag and that on that, yeah.
Thank you. Um, I I know we're a little short on time, so I'm going to ask one final question that was in the chat and then I'll read a few of the comments. And what we'll do is we'll make sure to capture all of these and send them over to Professor, Professor Lewis and Ivan for any follow up. So the last question that I saw on here was from Christie de Laurentis, so Commissioner de Laurentis said, thank you for the clear portrayal of the data on racial wealth gap, very informative. Have you done specific research on past assessments, practices or property tax policies that have contributed to the inability of black and brown households to accrue wealth through homeownership?
So um, there are, there's an abundance and I'm happy, we cite a lot of this and I'm happy to send anybody who's interested a list of references and stuff. There's actually a lot of really good data about, you know, starting in the 1930s up through the last 10 or 15 years on the wealth accumulation opportunities through ownership and how they were distributed unevenly. Just one, you know, the billions of dollars that the homeowners loan corporation through the Federal Housing Administration gave out, starting in the mid 1930s of the billions of dollars. I think that there was 2% of that went to African Americans, for instance, up through about 1990. So there there's a lot of good data about that. When we're talking particularly about assessment practices and property tax policies, I think the really, the recent really powerful studies, now I think somebody mentioned this in one of the chats, interestingly, has been come out of work that started with journalists, with investigative journalists, particularly through ProPublica Illinois. But there's a scholar down at the Harris School that worked with them on some of that and then expanded that. And this is the work that has shown that, and I'm sure a lot of you paid attention through the last election cycle, that folks in low income neighborhoods are actually paying higher property taxes than other parts of the city. And we're seeing now the data on appraisals. There was a big editorial in the New York Times recently that cited this research coming out of the Harris School. The the scholar's name is Chris. I'm gonna forget. I'll get I'll get his name to you. But I think the what we're finding is just, you know, people stopped paying attention for a while, I think. And now we're seeing there's all this new work that's coming out. I will tell you, we we had the journalist who started the work on on property taxes on a panel a couple of years ago. And he couldn't, he couldn't get anybody interested. He finally went down and got this guy at the Harris School and the guy kept saying, it can't be true, it can't be. And then they looked at the data and lo and behold, there were these really stark patterns. So the where that research comes from and how it how it emerges is kind of an interesting story unto itself, but we didn't do it ourselves, but I can certainly get any of it to you if you're interested. Ah, thank you. Yvonne put the link in the in the chat.
So if I may, Commissioner and I, just really quickly, I posed that question and I think that there's some really interesting consequences of the applied COVID factor that occurred in 2020 in in Cook County that raises concerns for us in the South suburbs because it's devaluing homes, you know, arbitrarily devaluing just when some of our community members need to take a second mortgage out for sending kids to college and other things like that. So it's eliminating opportunity in that regard. So it's concerning. You know, for for a host of reasons. So we're going to be paying attention to really what the repercussions of that policy decision was on our, you know, on our region in Cook County.
Thank you for clarifying that. Um, so I know that there was another question in regards to FAFSA applications and whether the context of parental in- income is truly considered. I don't know if you have an answer for that, but I would definitely forward over your, the full question from one of our commissioners over to you, because again, we're a little short on time, so I want to make sure that we can move along the agenda. I I I want to, you know, thank you, Professor Lewis and Ivan for joining us today. I think it is a very timely you know, interaction and conversation, given the report that I gave back about the county looking at an equity fund. And and I think it would be extremely helpful to one of our, I can't recall which commissioner asked in regards to the context of how we can bring that to Cook County, right? How we can bring this data and see what the action steps are in Cook County. So I would love to follow up with you. I know maybe Yessenia or myself can follow up to see how we can really look at it and within our jurisdiction at Cook County of what are the the things that could be done? What is the infrastructure that needs to be built so that we can carry that message forward as we're building? Again, how the the funding will be spent and what type of priorities will be set forth? So again, thank you so much for joining us today. And thank you all for your questions and lively participation in the Q and A section. Um, so we'll move forward with committee, sorry, committee reports. So earlier this month, I had an opportunity to meet with the chairs and co-chairs of the different committees to discuss different things amongst some of how my office can be supportive in regards to some of the priorities that the committees will be setting forward. So we're going to continue those conversations with the chairs and co-chairs of the committees. So I'm going to turn it over to the the co-chairs so that we can get an update on their end. So I'll hand it over first to Commissioner Cooley and Commissioner Aglipay to do a small report on social and human capital committees.
Thank you. We are, continue to focus on and refine recommendations around how the county can support equitable workforce development as well as leveraging procurement opportunities and thinking more holistically about what procurement looks like, what investments and supports need to be made for businesses to be even ready and prepared for procurement opportunities as well as thinking about right sizing and matching the capacity where minority businesses are at the time. And then also thinking about green opportunities with thinking about green, the green economy and jobs and workforce and procurement there as well. So really looking at, you know, kind of the mix of pathways for secure employment as well as wealth building for businesses and how the county can support that more fully. And Commissioner Aglipay, do you have any other thoughts on our?
No, that that's is about right.
And I think there'll obviously be some overlays with the funds, so really interested in hearing more about that development as well.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And again, thank you both for bringing up the issue of in Cook County of 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 how we're doing our protocols and procedures for safety environments. I appreciate you both bringing, you know, the issue and and bringing attention to the matter, having lively discussions with me. So we'll definitely keep you both in the loop as we proceed with the hearing, so.
And what was the number of the ordinance again?
Let me see if I can get that for you. I'm not sure if I had it in my notes, but we can, oh, it's 21 dash 3149. And we could put it in the chat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so we'll follow up with Commissioner Freeman. I'm not sure if she had to jump off. I believe she did. So we'll we'll table updates on the Financial Capital Committee. I'll hand it over to co-chair Yonin and Malone.
Well, thank you. And just a little update, we were able to welcome our new co-chair, Morgan Malone, and got a chance to cover a couple items that are, you know, there's some updates from some of the initiatives. First and foremost, the parts of the fair transit that have been implemented, which kicked off in January. Commissioner Killen gave a little update as to, you know, what that kind of a rollout and after about four or five months of what kind of data is being produced on some of the ridership, some good information that was gleaming from that. You know, Madam Chair, again, the discussions of how this, you know, Social Innovation Committee could continue to advocate for an integrated fare card system continues to kind of produce the data that shows the importance of us for advocating for that to happen. So perhaps down the road here, we can schedule for a full Innovation Commission meeting where we can do an update on that. Secondly, we did cover a couple of things with the opportunities that Christian de Laurentis spoke about with just the bill that is before the legislature on some of the tax inequities that are happening to businesses in the Southland and continue to be able to kind of give some updates on that to the committee as to where that bill is. And then a quick update from the Invest in Cook and and some of the investments that we are looking to announce sometime soon and regarding some of the infrastructure improvements in the Southland. And a lot of the discussion then kind of pivoted towards leveraging some of the American Recovery Bill funding for some infrastructure projects or some accelerants that could kind of be part of the county's investment in some infrastructure projects in the Southland. So those were the main items that we had covered. And again, we look forward to maybe opportunities where we could come to the big commission discussing fair transit and the legislative bill with the tax incentives in the Southland. And that's the report. Morgan, anything you want to bring up?
You've covered it.
Thank you.
Thank you, co-chairs Malone and Yonin. Um, I I know currently we, our Intellectual Capital Committee is still inactive, so we'll definitely circle back with you all once we are able to solidify a chair or co-chairs for that committee. We'll update you all on that end. Um, we'll open it up briefly for any announcements or any upcoming events that we want to highlight now before adjourning? Is there anybody that has announcements or any upcoming events? Yes, Commissioner Malone.
Hey, everyone. You may have already heard, but I am on the Bronzeville Lakefront team, which is the redevelopment of the old Michael Reese Hospital site. We recently launched our social and we're in the process of really rolling out engagement. And so we are looking for everyone. We are looking for workforce. We are looking for MWE contractors. We are looking for interns. We're going to be launching our intern program on June 1st with an application deadline of June 15th. And they'll start on July 1st and these are paid internships. We are looking for everything and we are really, really trying to do our due diligence to make sure that this is not only the most equitable development in the city and the county, but the most equitable development in the country. And so it's it's huge, it's huge deal. I would love to share more with the the county, the commission about our model even for equitable development as we think about ways that we can translate that into social innovation and economic development in other parts of the county. But I just want to share those things with you. We're really, really proud of the work that's happening at Bronzeville Lakefront and I'm happy to talk about it anytime.
Thank you so much. Any other announcements? Wonderful. Okay, so then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. By the way, can we make sure, Yessenia, to put into the record that Peter Criticals joined us as well? And also Commissioner Alston was able to join us. So I want to make sure that they're also included into the record.
I will add them to the record.
Thank you. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Brutus. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Flores, I believe. All those in favor?
Hi.
The post, you guys have it. Thank you all so very much for joining us and we'll definitely follow up with any additional information as Professor Lewis maybe narrows it down for us on Cook County government. I'll bring forward the suggestions and we can have a discussion afterwards. So thank you all for joining us again.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Bye, everyone.